I call this December the first meeting of the Union County Planning Board to Order. And the first issue of business, I would like to have a motion to appoint Lance and Clint as voting members tonight.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion or a hearsay?
Patrick.
Patrick and Clint. Patrick and Clint, okay, I do apologize, okay.
And I'll still make that motion.
All right.
Second.
You have a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, like sign, motion passes. I apologize for that error, you have to excuse me, my age. At this time, is there any additions or deletions of the agenda? And I have before me a letter asking that we would wait until the January meeting to discuss the text amendment eight, number eight on our agenda. And because it goes hand in hand with number seven, the persons that are involved in that would also like to have that moved until our January meeting. So I would like for someone to make a motion that number seven, number eight go into the January meeting.
Motion.
F, F of number seven, because we still do want to discuss some of the other text amendments in number seven, but item F.
Item F only.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Number seven.
Would your motion reflect that?
Reflects item F only of number seven, and number eight be rescheduled till January.
All right, and do we hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, any further discussion or any questions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, like sign. All right, at that point then, I'd like to have a motion that we do approve the agenda with seven F being deleted and number eight in its entirety being deleted.
Still moving.
We have a motion, and we have a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, like sign, motion passes. All right. In your packet, we had a, our minutes were presented to us from the August meeting and the September the first meeting, and we can, does anyone, does anyone want to make a motion that we approve the August the fourth meeting as presented in our packet of materials that we listed?
I'll need a motion.
A second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor of approval of the August the fourth meeting say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. And I hope you've had an opportunity to look at the September the first meeting, also minutes. Do we hear a motion that we approve those?
Motion to approve.
All right, I have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. We will now move to item number five, which is the conditional rezoning petition number fifteen dash oh four, Windin Creek LLC, James Allen Lee, requesting a rezoning classification from ally light industrial to HC, which is conditional, containing ten point eight four eight acres, located on six oh one south within Beaufort Township. Would you like to come forward and address us on that, please?
Again, as you stated, and I think if you'll take a look at your packet there that's on your desk, I think I actually get, got these flip flopped. I think put amendment was first, so I think the conditional was at the back of that one. So get the one out that says conditional zoning staff report on it, I apologize for that. Again, Everett, as you stated, this is conditional rezoning petition twenty fourteen dash zero zero four, reference name on it's going to be Windin Creek LLC. The current zoning is light industrial, the current use is that of a lawn and landscaping sale, sales and service business, and it's ten point eight four eight acres. They're proposing to rezone this to highway corridor conditional zoning district. This is a little bit different than some of the conditional rezoning district, conditional districts you've seen in the past. I think all the ones that have come to you in the past have been conditional rezonings where they've had a site plan associated with it. What this is, is their limited uses, and that is an option under the conditional rezoning classification, is that you can, you can go in and take that table of uses, and you've got all this laundry list of uses that are allowed, and you can go in and you can say, okay, well, we're not going to do this, this, this. That's what this is. They submitted this on October twenty third of this year. Basically, if you're familiar with six oh one south, this is Whitley's Lawn and Landscape Company. The address is forty three oh eight Pageland Highway. There's currently a building on it, a couple buildings, I think, maybe three. One's the building out front where I think they do the majority of sales, and then there's some service facilities at the back, the warehouse facilities. This rezoning is needed to facilitate the expansion of the facility and some future retail sales that they want to do on site. Light industrial does not allow retail sales. They're allowed to do retail sales in the current building because it was their, it's basically the grandfather use. They go to, there's a new building that they want to do some retail sales in, that would be prohibited under light industrial. So this would actually allow them to do retail sales in the new facility, the new building, and it would bring the old building more into compliance with the ordinance. It would not, would not be an ardent use anymore. As I said, this was a conditional rezoning request to limit uses. They've agreed to limit, to eliminate four uses from the table of uses, and this was based on some discussions that the applicant had with staff, some uses that staff is uncomfortable with. The majority of uses in highway corridor are appropriate along six oh one south. It's a, it's a, it's a four lane highway, it's got some limited access on it. So the majority of those commercial uses were appropriate for that area. However, we talked with, with the applicant, and I think they've agreed to limit their, to eliminate off print signs, because off print signs are, they're allowed in highway corridor, but in the ordinance says only on highway seventy four, but we wanted to make sure if that was ever amended, that we didn't get any, any off print signs located on six oh one. So they went ahead and put that in there for us. Eliminate campgrounds and RV parks, flea markets, and type three mini stores. Type three mini stores are basically the metal buildings that are one stories, long, they're long rows, and they've got roll up doors on them, typical gravel parking lot with a chain link fence around it. That's, that's your type three mini store. So they've eliminated those uses, so they won't be able to do those on the site. The site access is provided through an existing driveway off Pageland Highway that serves the facility now. As I said, the subject property is currently zoned light industrial. Areas immediately, and I've got the map pulled up here, so the highlighted parcel is the parcel that's been petitioned. So immediately to the north, those parcels are currently zoned light industrial. And then this is a mountain.
Mountain view.
Mountain view, yeah, there's a, there's an old hotel building there, there's a couple of wireless facilities there, so it's an old commercial area. But the majority of the surrounding uses you see is RA forty. And there's some, like I said, there's some B four immediately here, and there's right down here. Most of what's around it is active farmlands, open vacant, in farm right now. They did, and I'm going to apologize for this, I just noticed this, if, on your, on your staff report, completely ignore the community meeting section, I forgot to go back and put in, that's the community meeting information for an old petition. So I apologize for that, I just now noticed it. They held their community meeting last Tuesday, and I think Brian attended, I think Brian was the only person beside the applicant that was there, nobody, none of the other adjacent property owners came. There's really only, I think these two properties are owned, Danger Ray, Wayne Ray, and everything else around it is owned by Frank Howey, except for one little piece here at the intersection, which is left over from DOT was doing some of the land acquisition for the widening of six oh ones, and it's a little triangle that DOT owns. So the majority of the surrounding properties were, you know, they were all notified, and nobody, nobody came to the community meeting, so no major concerns were raised. The property is located within an employment corridor area of the comprehensive plan. What that does is it identifies future corridors that are suited for business development, and primarily six oh one was identified as a, as a corridor that could support business type development that did not need to rely on water and sewer infrastructure, because there is none, there is none down there. Mainly it was seen as an industrial, retail, and logistics corridor, for logistics mainly being for farm, farm products. Being able to take farm products from the area and either move them somewhere else, like a distribution facility or a processing facility. That, that's how that corridor came about. This does fit in with the, with the future land use plan. So in addition to the, to the plan, it also helps to support strategy shop one point zero of the comprehensive plan, which, which basically says we should support retail development in those areas that are identified on the future land use plan. Based on those factors, staff is of the opinion that this, this conditional rezoning request should be approved. Got any questions? I'll be able to have it in. Yes, sir.
Lee, go back to your community meeting.
Yes, sir.
You said the first paragraph?
The whole thing.
Even summary concerns?
Even the summary of concerns.
Okay.
Yes, sir. I meant to go back and update that, and this slipped my mind, so I need to go back and do that.
Thanks for the clarification.
Basically, the community meeting, there was, Brian Matthews was the only non-applicant or applicant representative there, and I don't think any major concerns were raised. Brian, I don't know if you want to speak to that.
So the question for this is really adding additional retail space?
Yeah.
What do we have currently, and what are we adding? How much space are we going to add?
I'm not, I'm not certain of the square footage of the, the new building.
The new building is twenty-five hundred square feet.
I'm sorry, forty-five hundred?
Twenty-five hundred square feet is the new building, and then they have space inside the existing building. I don't have the square footage of that, but because they added a new building, that's what sort of tipped it over into the, you've got to comply with the ordinance, you can't really expand into the new building.
What the highway corridor district is, just to kind of describe that, it's kind of a hybrid district, so it takes some elements from light industrial and some elements from like a B four, and it allows, it allows a mix of those uses. The, the light industrial is really primarily a light industrial zoning district. The B four is primarily a retail zoning district. That, that highway corridor kind of blends those together, so it allows some of those uses to operate together in some areas. Most of highway seventy four is on highway corridor. What we have left, most of it's been annexed by Monroe Indian Trail and Stallings and Winged Marshall, but we have some gaps, and the majority of that is on highway corridor.
So y'all don't see any problems with the DOT access, et cetera?
No.
New retail, new customers, et cetera, things?
And, and as part of whatever they do, they'll, they'll have to go through a zoning review to get the use established, and I think part of that's been done, but there's some more steps that need to take place on that. And as part of that, they will, you know, we'll probably have the conversation with the DOT about exactly what DOT wants to see. DOT may end up just telling us, they're fine, but, but that'll be a conversation the staff has with DOT, but we don't anticipate any major, any major concerns.
And just out of curiosity, if they were to ever leave this facility, it would remain a highway corridor with the restriction of the off print signs, et cetera?
Yes, sir. Zoning always runs with the land.
Right, okay.
Is there, are there any restrictions on the type of retail?
No, sir. Our ordinance doesn't really, maybe with a couple of exceptions, our ordinance doesn't really break out different types of retail uses. Our ordinance used to break out a lot of different kinds of retail, but we actually looked at the ordinance, most of those were allowed by right, so it didn't really make a lot of sense to break those out. I think there are some that we probably break out, like some adult oriented businesses and things like that, we break out separately.
We don't call that retail.
Right. But, but for the most part, retail uses are all lumped in one category.
Any more questions, Lee? Any discussion about this, members of the board?
I think the applicant is here.
We're ready to move.
I'm sorry, I was getting ahead of myself, I apologize. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you.
I'm James Allen Lee, I represent Windin Creek, which is the property owner here. And maybe, I think this is helpful, but I'll give you a little history about what actually went down and what happened. Most of you who've been in Union County are familiar, it's now Whitley Power Equipment to my clients, but it's Whitley Lawn and Garden there on six oh one south. And what he did is he had gone through the process and built another building there, and it was going to be a warehouse, a storage warehouse, and he wanted to build a, have a sporting goods store, and he was going to do that within his existing facility, but he needed to move some of the stuff out there. Well, he went through to get his FFL, federal firearms license, so to be able to sell firearms for the hunting store. For insurance purposes, they needed him to have the retail in a separate building for security reasons. And he went and did it, not knowing that he needed rezoning, so he got an out of compliance letter from the zoning department. That's when he called me, and we went and met with planning staff and looked for a way to do things, because, you know, when I looked at it, I kind of scratched my head and thought, well, light industrial, and asked them, why is all this, you know, zoned light industrial? And they kind of scratched, I said, because it was zoned, whenever it was zoned a long time ago. But, you know, it is on six oh one, which is one of our major corridors. That's been a retail space for a long time, so we were looking for different things, and it was mentioned highway corridor, and all that, that kind of is, but they don't want billboards, which technically, as Lee said, it's not allowed anywhere except on seventy-four under the existing ordinance, we said we don't want billboards. And then there were three other uses, which he read off, the campground, RV parks, flea markets, type three mini storage, which aren't allowed by right under highway corridor anyway, it takes a special use permit. But what it does by putting it as a, as a condition, that we're not going to do that use, that it takes it out of the quasi judicial for adjustment, and puts it back as a political decision to change that, the commissioners would have to, have to agree to that change. And we have no intent to that, I mean, we know what he wants to do with the property. And as he said, there's some other, other processes ongoing at the same time, they have to go back through the inspections, and architects putting the plans together to make sure everything's ADA compliant, because they're moving the wrong, correct me if my terminology is wrong, I think it's S one classification to a mercantile classification, is that right, Brian?
Yes, sir.
So, so there are a couple of things going on there, but that has to be done before they can occupy the space, but we'd also need the ability to have retail there. That's the only reason. And, you know, we talked about the community meeting, Wayne Ray is a friend of the applicant, he's a separate client of mine, he has no problem, he has Monroe Farm Center right beside there, you know, the seed cleaning and fertilizer sales. And Frank Howey owns the other property that's basically on both sides of six oh one there. I spoke with Frank coincidentally today, and he said he has no problem with the rezoning, he was notified there, that he, he did ask my client to turn down our shield, one of the existing lights that's, that's there, because he says it affects his crops on that corner, and he laughed, that was his only request, so, full disclosure, I tell you that. But that's, that was, that was it, and DOT did not come, like I said, they have two fragments. So what we're asking for is the ability to actually make what's there in compliance and give him the ability to expand his, his retail space. And, you know, I don't know if it's relevant, but really his, his purpose is to give himself more year round business. They have a lot of slow time, which, which is hunting season, when the lawn and garden business is slow, and they just want something else to put there and do, and that's the reason for the request, and that's why we asked you to approve the highway corridor conditional zoning request, here's expanded retails.
Any more questions, will they have?
No, that's fine. Mr. Chairman, if there are no members of the audience that are here to speak in opposition, I make a motion to approve the conditional rezoning petition.
Is there anyone here in the audience that wants to speak to this issue, or this If not, then the chair will entertain that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a second. Is there any further discussion amongst the board members? Any questions you need to ask the applicant or to the board? If there's none, at this time, we will vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion passes. At this time, we will go to item number six, which is a HUD amendment, HUD six B two, request to amend the approved HUD to allow the construction of a hundred and six thousand approximately square foot indoor self-storage facility type one, located in the intersection of Tom Short and Ray Road, containing seven point oh five acres, and being within the Sandy Ridge Township. Item number six.
So there's our parcel. Before I do that, I want to go to the site plan. Again, as you stated, this is a HUD amendment. You guys saw recently a HUD amendment for the same piece of property.
This was a swim pool, correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, it is. So this, you'll see on the HUD staff report that it says the existing use is vacant, which it is. There is a HUD approved amendment to that, to build a indoor swim facility of fifteen thousand square feet, and it is currently, they were approved by the board of county commissioners to amend that HUD, and it is currently, they submitted building plans and zoning permit application for that property, so it's currently a big review for the building.
Did they, and forgive me for not knowing the answer, did they agree to the, there was an issue around the wall?
Yes, sir. They, they, they came to a consensus on, on what they were going to do with the wall. Just to, just to kind of give you some history on that, this first went to the board of county commissioners for the public hearing, some folks from the neighborhood, and this is Hunter Oaks down here, and Counterfield Creek is over here, and some folks showed up, and they, they want an opportunity really to meet with the applicant, to talk about some screening issues from their adjacent properties. So the board of county commissioners delayed the public hearing, or pushed the public hearing back a little bit to a different date to allow the opportunity to have an on-site community meeting. So we met out there back early in the fall, I think. I, I attended that community meeting, and a lot of the residents came, the applicant was there with his representatives and property owner, and then just some, a lot of area residents came as well. And they had some good discussion occur during, during that community meeting. I think after the community meeting, the applicant and the neighborhood, some of the representatives met, they finally came to an agreement on the type of wall that they were going to build. At first, they were talking about a brick wall going all the way down. I think what would eventually kind of, because what was agreed on was not really an all-brick wall, mainly because there's a lot of existing vegetation, large trees that kind of border this property. I think putting in that brick wall with the foundation would undermine some of the root systems of those trees, they were worried about, well, you know, want to keep those trees, because that provides a good screen against the business. So what was agreed to were brick columns with like a vinyl fence in between that was like a kind of earth tone type color, so it wouldn't stand out as much. But that would be put behind the tree line, so the trees would be between the houses and the fence, and then you'd have the fence and then the roadway. So that's what kind of was, was agreed to when we went to the board of commissioners.
Does this agreed upon alternative extend to the back of this development, or are they going to be back saying, no, now we got to extend it to cover this?
What's, what's been proposed is, and the applicants here, and I'm sure they'll, they'll correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe they're proposing the exact same, same thing all the way down.
All the way down to the end of the parcel?
That's correct.
Would that be constructed as the developments come in, or is that going to be completed?
That's the first thing we'll do.
All, the entire length?
The pole, the pole would be constructed first, and if we're successful, we would construct the wall that would go from the start of our boundary all the way to Ray Road.
Okay, so no wall until the development warrants the wall?
Correct.
Got it.
No, 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 no. As we build a self-storage facility, we will have the wall stretching from our parcel line with the aquatic center all the way to Ray Road. So.
Okay.
Running eight hundred feet of rear parcel boundary.
Got you.
We'll build it all the way to the start.
Thank you.
So, so again, like I said, this was a request to amend this facility again. This, this request does include, it still includes the swim facility, that's not going away. We're adding the self-storage facility. What the type three, I'm sorry, the type one self-storage facility is, is basically the indoor climate controlled type, type facility. So it's not the, it's not the metal building, the long metal building thing we were talking about last time. This is, this is an indoor climate controlled facility. This will be on about seven, about approximately seven acres on the site. It's served, this could be served by a parking lot that's supposed to contain about thirty-four parking spaces, which exceeds, which exceeds the minimum that we require, which is about twenty-six. We're considering a HUD request, it's important to consider the entire HUD and not the, just the specific site. In this case, the entire HUD includes the commercial area where Coles is, as well as Hunter Oaks, which is a single family neighborhood. Buildings, the building designs, materials should be consistent in the HUD. The proposed use, the proposed building uses mostly brick and glass, and resembles an office building with, with retail on the ground floor. They provided some variation in color and design, and that's fairly consistent with the existing commercial buildings within the HUD. As you can see, this is located at the corner of Tom Short and Ray Road. The primary access, as you can see, this is, let me talk about this entrance first. This will be a right in, right out entrance, because there's not a, there's, this is median divided here, so you can't go across. So the primary access will really be off Tom Short coming in here. And I think the applicants have a, have a little bit better color rendering of this that they're probably going to show you, but, you know, they're going to show you this building, but there's also, I think there's some concern from some of the residents about this long stretch of road, about people driving too fast, so they've agreed to put in some road cushions along that to kind of calm that, that traffic down a little bit. The, the current zoning on this is HUD six with a B two land use designation. The majority of the immediate area is also in that HUD. Some, some of those do have the R twenty designation on them. The comp plan calls for this area to be developed as a small community center. Those are intended to accommodate community-based commercial uses, including retail, restaurants, and services, and those centers can range in size up to approximately four hundred thousand square foot size, square feet size. The staff is of the opinion that this HUD amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and that it provides for commercial development in an area designated for that type of development. It is also in keeping with the overall design uniformity within the HUD, since it utilizes most of the brick. most of the brick materials and includes some variation in color and design. Again, this is the plan, the site plan that was submitted for this project. I'm also going to cycle through some elevations. I want to show you kind of what they submitted for this project. So this is the side that would face the Hunter Oaks neighborhood. And actually, let me back, let me back off, and let me go to, let me go to another one first. So this would be, this would be the Ray Road side, so this is the, you know, you can see they've got some, you know, lots of brick here and glass, and, and this kind of, I think that's going to be maybe an EBS type material with some awnings on it. So, you know, primarily it looks like an office building. This is something you typically see with a re-story type office building. So this is the side that would face Ray Road, so this is what you see as you're driving down Ray Road. The Tom Short side, again, it sort of looks, looks like the, the, the Ray Road side, just a little bit more white here, but again, mostly brick with, with some brick, with some glass features. Out at the, at the intersection of Tom Short and Ray Road, that's, that's a, the large floodplain area, there's wetlands located there, some fairly large trees. You're really, this is the, this is the elevation view from that angle, you're more than likely not going to see the majority of it, because those, those existing, existing trees within the floodplain and the wetlands area are going to stay. They're not going to be taken down. So as you're, I guess as you're going, coming from Mecklenburg into Union, this is kind of the, the view you're going to see first, but imagine a whole lot of trees in front of it. And then this is the side that faces the residential portion of, of Hunter Oaks, so this is the, there, there would be homes that would be facing this side, so we asked them if they would sort of tone down some of those colors that were facing the homes, so they didn't, you know, so it was more kind of a earth tone muted color, so they weren't looking at these, you know, these real bright colors. We didn't know that the residents would necessarily want to look out their back door and see that. So, so they complied with that, they toned those colors down, and again, a lot of the existing trees that, that are on that property line will, will hopefully be saved during the construction process, and there will also be a fence that matches the fence that was approved as part of the, the swim facility. That really concludes my presentation. If any of the board members have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. The applicants are here, I think they don't want to take the presentation away.
Lee?
Yes, sir.
Go back to your map that shows the entrances, please, sir, if you don't mind. Okay, up here at the Tom Short, you said that's going to be the main entrance.
Yes, sir. That's a full access, that's a full movement location, so this is just, this over here at Ray is just a right-in, right-out, because there's a grass median here, you know, you can't go across that, so traffic coming this way will turn right in, traffic leaving could turn right out. So this side, this side is, is where that, the majority of that traffic will come in.
Refresh, help me, board members here, if I remember correctly, the last time we approved this, this swimming complex, there was a whole lot of families here, right or wrong?
There was a tremendous amount of families.
Now, this is my, I may totally, be totally off-base, so I want to apologize to everybody, but it appears to me that this is the main entrance. You're going to have U-Hauls, you're going to have pickups with trailers coming in, you're going to have small kids, high school kids, you're going to have buses parked out here, et cetera, trying to navigate around that small exit right there. And I, I'm, based on the fact that this is going to be used by not only local people but area high schools, like what we heard in this, this is very concerning to me from a traffic standpoint, that somebody could accidentally step out in front of a truck, a pickup truck, whatever the, I said eighteen wheeler, I should have said a, a smaller, not an eighteen wheeler, but a little bit box truck. This, this could be a hazard waiting to happen.
And, and I, I do understand that, that concern. You know, this facility is, is primarily a training facility, so you're right, there will be some high school kids there. The applicant did state during the public hearing, I believe, that they were not going to be having tournaments there, so swim meets and things like that. So it's, it's a training facility, so it's not going to be, I'm sure you've seen tournament play-type places where there's traffic and, and people are all over the place, so it's not going to be a facility like, like that, but, but you will have, you know, high school kids potentially using it and people that are coming there for training. A storage facility, and, and the applicants may have, have some data on this, but they're, they're typically low-volume traffic generators, they don't really generate a whole lot of traffic. The majority of people will rent a space, they'll come put their stuff in it, and then they leave it there.
Is there intent to rent trailers and vehicles out of this space?
I, I, I don't believe that's the case, but I think that'd be a question for the, for the applicant.
There's not. Yes, sir.
It is just a, I understand it gets just a rental facility, so you, you rent a, a storage unit inside that building?
Pardon?
That could be a condition that the board want to consider that in the applicant's report, that could be a condition.
I'll tell you what I'm concerned about, I think of Pineville.
That's right, I'm sorry, this is a PUD amendment, it's not a CZ, my mistake.
That's okay.
It's not a condition.
Not a condition, my mistake.
What I'm concerned about, members of the board, is that when you turn off of 521 to go to Pineville on the backside of the mall, if you get past Ballantyne area, there's a school, and there's a big storage unit there, and you got these parents trying to come out, you got school buses, it is, they've got police out there stopping traffic. I'm not saying this is going to be a traffic congestion.
Yeah.
But it looks like to me it is.
Well, and.
I'm concerned for the safety of, of students, as well as parents, et cetera, with people that are going to be.
Yeah.
Driving box trucks and pulling trailers.
I, I would, I would tend to say that, that, of, of the uses that you talked about down on 521, I'm not familiar with.
Not on 521, it's, it's, you turn left there by the IHOP.
Okay.
Where that new church is being built, and you go straight down that road about sixty, maybe three miles, four miles.
Route one sixty.
I can't think of the.
Think it's Route one sixty?
No, it's Providence West or something.
Um, and, and just out of the uses that, that you listed there, I think you said a shopping center and a school, those are huge traffic generators, so a lot of that, the majority of that traffic is being generated by those two uses.
Didn't you say there's going to be retail on the first floor of this?
No, it's just designed to look that way.
Oh, okay.
There, there's no retail at all. The only retail that would be in there would be, I don't know if there's an on-site person or not, but I'm assuming maybe you could go in there and talk to somebody about leasing a, a space, but that's, that's it. Generally, when, when you see a, a facility this large, where the ordinance only requires you to have twenty-six spaces, that, that's an indication that it's a really low traffic generator, there's not going to be a lot of traffic associated with it. If you had a, if you had a hundred and six thousand square foot re, uh, retail facility, there'd be a lot more parking spaces than just.
I agree, but at, at the same time, where I'm coming from is, I'm looking at it from a safety aspect, whether you're turning right, whether you're turning left, going across.
You're looking at it from the standpoint that you're coming in through the parking lot.
Right. Virtually everyone's going to have to cross that road, that driveway to get to their, their parking space.
If you remember correctly, the families we had here, they were young, they were young families, have young kids in these swimming classes, et cetera, so forth, so in the demand.
I want to ask the applicant a question. I, I know that we talked, you guys were going to put in some, some, some road hump, road cushion type facilities. You didn't, did, did you propose any over here? I know it's not your property, but did you?
We, we can't, because it's not our property, we'd certainly be in favor of talking to Peter, that would be a lot of, a lot of.
What, um, is the applicant, and we shouldn't wait and save these questions for the applicant, I know, do they have a right-of-way, a by right, or have they have a purchase, or they have an easement for a right-of-way in through the, the swimming pool?
Um, I'm assuming that what they'll end up doing is they'll do a cross-access easement to this property. That's the typical thing that you'll see with, I mean, this is not a shopping center, but that's something you would see generally with the shopping centers, they'll have an easement that comes down, crosses that property to allow access here. I will say that this did go through the Board of Adjustment already. This is one of those that requires the dual process with special use, and I shouldn't have said this before, but it requires a special use permit and the HUD amendment. They do have their special use permit in place, so this, this was approved by the Board of Adjustment. We also, last Monday, had the community meeting. It was at the Marvin Amys Iron Church on Crane Road, I was a staff member that went to that. I think we had two people that were listed on the attendance sheet, one of them was me, the other one was a resident of Hunter Oaks, his name is John Yeagley, he may be here, and I, I don't think any major concerns were, were raised during the meeting. I think we were there for about an hour and a half, like that, maybe an hour. Just had very general discussions of it. I just want to say that same.
So what you're saying is, and I'm not, I'm not opposed to this, I'm, I don't want somebody to come back in five years and challenge the board that makes a decision if we do something that causes something bad, okay? Just a minute, the question I've got on this is, so you're saying that this access has not been discussed with the, the training facility owner?
No, they, they are aware of this project. They, they've been in discussions with the Morning Star folks about, about the fence. Peter Perez was the applicant on this, and we've, we've worked with both of those applicants, and I know that, that the applicant for the swimming facility and the Morning Star facility have worked very closely, in fact, they use the same engineer, I believe, to design the plans. So, so yes, both, both these applicants are very aware of what's going on, and, and they, they work together to kind of develop this, this, this facility. DOT is also aware of the project. They've not issued driveway permits on it yet, just because that's just a process that comes a little bit later, but we've talked with the DOT, they don't really have any major, any major concerns about, about the project. I, I do see your, your concern there, I, I don't, I don't think there's going to be any major issues there, I, it doesn't cause me great concern, but, but I, I do understand where, where you're, where you're coming from, I, I really do.
I'd like to be the devil's advocate, and I agree with you because I realize that it's a youth training center, but at least half of your traffic will be coming in from Morning Star from right turn, because that would be more easily accessed than persons turning left across Tom Short, and to be quite candid with you, for persons coming in from the direction going toward Mecklenburg County, they would probably be accessing the pool area from the Morning Star drive, it would be easier than it would be if they were having to make a left turn, hand turn across Tom Short. So there's going to be a certain percentage both ways.
Well, no, you're, you're going to get virtually zero right turn in, because anyone that's coming from that direction of Ray Road is going to turn at Tom Short before they bypass that entrance to come in here.
I think what, whatever.
You'll, you'll get right turn out, but you won't get.
You'll get right turn out, right turn.
You'll get, you'll get very little right turn in. You'll get almost zero right turn in.
Well, he's saying, why, why would you pass the first turn you have as an option to get to where your destination, to go on further past it to then come back, just to go in a different entrance? He's saying that very few would turn right.
I think what they're saying.
Four hundred feet ahead of that is your first turn, if you're coming from.
Sure.
And I don't, I don't think a traffic study's been done on it, but, because our ordinance wouldn't require that, but I, I think what the point that's being made is, you're going to have to turn right, come down here, and then turn left. This, there's a lot of people that live back here, and this road can, even the night that we had our community meeting, there's a lot of traffic going up and down that road. People may do that, I, I do think it would be easier to sit at the stoplight, go through, go the extra way down, have a direct access to that parking lot, and not have to worry about turning, waiting for cars to pass, then turning, going through this parking lot access. I, I, I do see that point. I thought, I, I think you're right, I think people will probably migrate this way, but over time, I think people may choose to do this.
Yes, Brian.
I do want to point out to the board that the property is currently designated as B two under the PUD, and under B two, there are a lot of other uses that have much more significant traffic generation patterns, and, and so what the applicant is actually requesting is something that has a very minimal traffic generation pattern. You think about what could be there, some, some other retail uses that would have significant traffic, a, a storage facility has very limited traffic impact, so again, that was one of the reasons why we also support it, is because, yes, we recognize that there's always going to be some traffic concerns, but of any of the choices, this is one of the least, as far as traffic generation.
Versus a daycare center.
Absolutely.
Which was proposed at one time on this property. This property has been vacant for twenty seven years. Mr. Black.
This, this was, this was originally approved for a seventy-five thousand square foot office building.
Exactly.
I think there were.
Wasn't it also a Super Walmart that's supposed to go there?
That, that was, that was over here. But it's the same, it's, it's the same area.
It's catamaran across the intersection. All right, anybody have any? Just out of curiosity, is the property, I guess, to the left of that creek or pond, is that, that is still same, part of the same parcel, correct? Can he?
Are you talking about this one here?
Yeah, I'm talking.
Right in there.
So the part, the property.
This, this parcel is all part of the same.
It, it was, it is not as of today, because at, part of the approval of the swim facility, this is a swim facility here, so part of that approval actually included this property line division, and the applicant actually brought that, that plat in for signatures today and had it recorded, so as of today, this is a separate piece of property. This is a two-acre piece, this is a seven-acre piece.
Okay, so on the seven-acre piece, is that, does that seven-acre piece belong to the storage facility?
Um, no, it still belongs to the developer now, they'll purchase it if the, if the permits are approved.
But it would.
But it would, yes.
The entire parcel is nine acres, the aquatic facility is purchased in two acre like. I think you're probably going to get it, the, the driveway could be somewhere else.
Right, my question is, can the driveway be located so that it's not passing through the swim facility?
This is, all this, um, this is all floodplain, just right here.
Wetland floodplain.
The location of it is pretty much constrained.
Plus, you don't really want to push, this, this drive lines up with another drive across the street, and you don't, you don't really want to push your driveways too close to that intersection, you kind of want to keep them away from it, so that's what they've kind of done here.
Any further questions, please? Not for, well, so let's, let's go there. So you say a driveway across the street, that's still undeveloped land as well?
This has been approved, this is in the town of Marvin, over here, across the street, and if I'm not mistaken, I believe part of this property has been approved for, there's a subdivision over there. Let, let me go back to the GIS, because I think there's lots actually shown up.
So Marvin Creek doesn't come all the way up to?
There you go. So this is a petition property, so you have, you have some common area, I think, as part of that development, and you have, this was a, this is all, all this blue area is Marvin. So I think, and maybe that was a, a proposed driveway, I think that's what that was, so that, that was a mis-speak on, on my part, I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay, that's.
That was a proposed driveway, I don't think that that's going to be built.
No, it, it doesn't exist today, which is why I was.
Exactly, that, that, that was my mistake, I was looking at, at the map, and it showed that stuff, and that exists, but I'm assuming that's probably going to be.
Which I think, going back to the traffic concern, it's, it's going to be a very, has the potential to be a very busy intersection, regardless. I was just, I mean, I was just curious and looking for different alternatives, it is, is it a possibility or an alternative to configure Ray Road so that it is a left turn in, left turn out as well?
I don't know.
And putting a divide through that median, or?
I think that'd be a worse traffic situation, you wouldn't want to do that on Ray Road.
And I don't think DOT would support it.
No, no, DOT would, they, no, they wouldn't support that.
I have a couple of.
We'll go to the applicant. Go ahead.
No, I do for the applicant.
Lee, any further comments?
No further comments.
All right. This time, we will entertain a presentation by the applicants.
Chairman, members of the planning board, my name is John Carmichael. I'm the office of Bradshaw in Charlotte, and I'm pleased to represent the applicant Morning Star Properties. This is Mr. Shapiro. We also have Mr. Brian Smith with Urban Design Partners. Brian's the engineer working on the project. Randy Goddard, Design Research Group. Randy is a traffic engineer, and Randy prepared a traffic memorandum regarding this proposed project and the impact of this surrounding transportation network. Mr. Smith and Mr. Goddard are available to answer your questions, which Mr. Shapiro's going to address shortly. I do want to reiterate a little bit what Mr. Jensen said, that this site is zone for B2 uses, and the proposed use, as Mr. Jensen said, is a self-service storage facility type one, which is allowed in B2 upon the issuance of a special use permit by the Board of Adjustment. There was a hearing, I think it was October 12th, where the special use permit relating to this project, and the Board of Adjustment did issue the special use permit. As you may know, one of the findings of fact that the board's required to make in order to issue the special use permit is that the proposed project will not materially endanger the public health, safety, and welfare. And I say that just for the point of, we've got our folks here, we're happy to answer any questions that you may have regarding traffic. I will say that this really is a, we think at least, a pretty good solution if the property's going to be developed for use allowed in B2, because it really does not generate a lot of traffic, and Mr. Shapiro's going to go over that with you shortly. I will say that in your ordinance, a self-service storage facility type one is defined as a commercial use rather than a warehouse or distribution use. And for us, that's a pretty important consideration when you're considering whether or not the proposal is consistent with your comprehensive plan. Mr. Jensen stated that the planning staff considers the proposal to be consistent, and they're recommending approval, and we certainly appreciate that, but I just want to reiterate that we also think it's consistent with a comprehensive plan, which designates the site as a small community center, and that's defined as a development that provides community-serving, community-serving commercial uses such as retail and service uses. And as Mr. Shapiro will explain to you in a moment, this really is a service use. For that reason, we would contend that it is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and the design of the facility is also consistent with the existing uses in the PUD, namely it's brick, glass, it has the appearance of an office building, but as Mr. Shapiro will tell you, it doesn't have the impacts in terms of traffic of an office building.
Thank you, and I'll go through the slides now.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to present this application for the PUD amendment for the parcel 06201007, the seven acres at the intersection of Tom Short and Ray Road. As John said, I'm Matt Shapiro, and I'm the Vice President of Real Estate for Morning Star Properties, and I'm representing the applicant. The company, I'm responsible for all the real estate investments of the firm. Go to the second slide, tell you a little bit about us. We've been in business since 1981. Over that time period, we've developed, acquired, and operated over 135 self-storage facilities, totaling in excess of 10 million square feet. For all 34 years of our company history, we've been based down the road in Matthews, North Carolina. We currently own and operate a network of 35 self-storage facilities and 12 marinas. Our 35 storage facilities makes us one of the largest independently owned and operated self-storage companies in the United States. We're experienced developers in Union County. We've developed three facilities over our 34 years, totaling over 300,000 square feet. The building on the slide right now is our most recent development, and that was constructed in 2009. It's located on Highway 74, right near Dale Jarrett Ford. We're all North Carolinians, we're all charlatans. We consider, we take our reputation very seriously and try and become responsible developers within North Carolina. Go to the next slide. Image on left is meant to portray the common perception the public has when they hear self-storage. This is admittedly a very well-earned reputation after years of building facilities in industrial areas with a junkyard feel, razor-wired fence, perhaps a junkyard dog. What we build is very different. The reality is that over this time period, storage has matured, and today's all indoor climate-controlled facilities are modern, attractive buildings that go toe-to-toe with office buildings. You get the same massing appearance and aesthetic and quality of construction, but you get much less traffic with uses of similar scale. The image on right, on the right, is our newest building. This opened in June of 2015. It's located in South End, which is a neighborhood right off of downtown of Charlotte. This slide is going to show the contrast, the intensity of development for what was previously approved before the Aquatic Center was approved. This would be the seventy-five thousand square foot office building. As you can see, the prior plan called for a seventy-five thousand square foot building, very long, it had 330 feet of visible facade to the single-family homes directly to the south. And frankly, a lot of building for a single-family home to look at from their backyard. Our proposed building only has 172 feet of visible facade, that's a 47% reduction of linear footage. The other very obvious difference, as John mentioned, between the two plans is parking. The office plan called for 250 spots, and that's just on the seven acres that we would be purchasing. If you contemplate the entire nine-acre parcel, there's over 350 parking spots. So, just the 250 versus our 34, which exceeds the ordinance, is an 86% reduction in parking. So, you can get a very good sense about the difference in intensity of usage between an office building and self-storage building. Our use is very passive, with low intensity. We generate less daily trips per thousand square feet than just about any other use out there. Lastly, I'd like to call your attention to the tree line at the top at the intersection of Tom Short and Ray Road. As part of the prior plan, there was a clear-cutting permit approved for this site, and we've elected to not clear-cut the parcel. We think that our plan works with the trees in place, and as responsible developers, we feel that it would be not in favor of the community to cut down all the trees. This is our site plan. The site plan that Mr. Jensen had is not the most updated. This is coming out of our SUP hearing. The seven-acre site, as we've learned, much of the seven acres is designated as wetlands. This creates a much smaller amount of developed land. As I mentioned, the trees at the intersection of Tom Short and Ray are to remain. We have a privacy and screening wall located between us and our single-family immediate neighbors, and it'll run the entire length of that 800-foot access drive. It'll be eight feet tall, and it'll match the aesthetic of the wall that's being built on the Aquatic Center. The screening wall will be 30 feet off of the property line. That's going to create a pretty substantive buffer, and we're going to supplement with landscaping on the inside of that, on the residential side of that screening wall. Our 212 by 172 building is oriented so our customer access points are situated away from our single-family neighbors, so it'll be on the Tom Short side and on the Ray side, not on the access roadside. This keeps what little noise we create away from our neighbors and keeps our low traffic less visible. On the commercial side, we are nestled behind the wetlands and the trees. Our building will be 35 feet tall and is designed to match the surrounding commercial developments and the requirements of the PUD that the facility will resemble an office building. In an effort to promote safe navigation of the access road, we've agreed to put three road humps in after talking with our neighbors, and also put a "no-through" traffic sign at the corner of Ray. Lighting will be a pedestrian scale, not to exceed 16 feet. All lighting, signage, and landscaping will need to oversee at the Union County ordinance. We presented the very first plan we submitted, and that had the buffer wall six feet off the property line and extending only the amount that we were going to immediately develop. We had a meeting with our immediate neighbors that shared the access drive with us, and we committed to do these things. Build the 800-foot wall first across to the Ray access line. We moved the proposed eight-foot wall to be 30 feet off the property line. Again, we originally had that drawn at six. We've agreed to enhance the landscape buffer on the residential side of the wall. We've reduced the architectural features on the side of the building that faces our single-family home neighbors so that the building blends into the background. We've agreed to pedestrian-scale lighting and signage reductions so there's not light leakage into the single-family homes. We pledged to install the speed bumps as a mitigant and the "no-through" traffic sign. Working with our immediate neighbors, we were able to gain support from them. In fact, one is here, and he spoke on our behalf at our SUP hearing in early October. These are our proposed elevations. You can see all four here closely. See the Ray Road side, which is the most ornate, Tom Short, and you can see the muted difference with the side that's going to face the residence, and then the wetland side, which we think is going to be completely screened from the intersection. This is a 3D rendering. This is the best representation of what the building will look like in person. This is from the Ray Road side, so as you pull in, right in, drive along that access road, this is our view corridor. We think as you look at the property, this is the most visible from any of the intersections and any of the streets. This is what our storefrontage will look like. Again, massing is similar to an office use in the previously proved plan in the existing PUD. It matches the Marvin Town Creek Center directly across the street. This is a 3D rendering of what the Aquatic Center will see, so it's as if you pulled up the Tom Short road. Again, consistent look and feel, consistent with what's going to be built at the Aquatic Center, and consistent with much across the street, the commercial development. So, here you see our building in the middle, overlaid with the Marvin Town Creek commercial development. This is the existing, most immediate comparison. This is directly across the road at the intersection of Ray and Tom Short, there's a Kohl's, a CVS, a Walmart, not a Walmart, excuse me, a Starbucks, and a cupcake green. But when you look at the architectural styles and the materials, we fit in very well. Talk about our low traffic. All of our enclosed climate control facilities, all of our enclosed climate control facilities are accessed via secure doors that require unique access codes. This feature allows us to track who is coming and when. We found that facilities very similar to the one we're going to build have very low intensity of usage. This is a result of not having commercial tenants. So, our units are roughly 100 square feet to 115 square feet, so you can't back a Mayflower truck up to it and fill that up. So, without having contractors and landscapers and the traditional-style self-storage, which is Army Barrack rows, where commercial tenants can be used very easily, what we end up with is a use much more like an attic or an extra closet. So, it's a primarily residential use. What that results in is we get 16 visits a day, roughly. So, that's a really quiet use compared to just about everything else that helps out there. I thought it was the most quiet use until the last SUP hearing, and there was a solar front in front of us, but we are really the most quiet use that we can think of. This segments our traffic even further. To answer Mr. Fisher's question about trucks, we do get trucks, but they're very infrequent. So, if you take a multi-story residential facility and compare it to a drive-up storage facility, we get one truck every two weeks. And I would define a truck as something that's 20 feet to 30 feet. Again, we don't get 18-wheelers, we don't get Mayflower trucks, we don't get van lines. They have their own bulk stores for their customers. We are primarily residential use, and we just don't generate trucks. And we do not plan on renting trucks or U-Hauls or trailers, so that traffic will be virtually nonexistent. And again, this is based on our own data, being able to track who uses our facility due to key locking. Again, we have 34 parking spots compared to 250. Talk about harming. We've had zero criminal incidents dating back to 2010 at our indoor climate control facilities. This is as far back as our data goes, but you have to have a key code to get in the facility, and then each individual unit is locked. So, it's a two-layer security system, and it's a very safe use. And lastly, talk about neighborhood harmony and how we fit into the fabric of the community. This is a map of customers at a facility we own that borders single-family homes. This is very similar to what we see at every one of our facilities. So, you can see that all but one of our customers comes from within a three-mile radius. So, the people who use this facility are your neighbors, the same people who live in the neighborhoods around you. We have the exact same draw of a grocery store, but much less of a daily use and intensity footprint. And I think I have one last slide to show you, but I didn't make it in that presentation. But if you can envision, this is, this is the site plan as exists today with the foliage. Then it's, we're not going to be cutting down any, we're treating the factory, we're going to be both screening and landscaping. So, you can see how well, from an aerial perspective, how well this facility is screened from the neighborhoods, the neighborhoods and the roads.
I would say, although this isn't a conditional rezoning, this site plan is part of the special use permit. So, the special use permit is conditioned on the site plan that was approved.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Shapiro or Mr. Carlisle, correct? Do we have any questions?
Just one question. Does Morning Star commit to maintain the landscape on the residential side?
It's not our intent to, because that would essentially, it's essentially institutionalizing the ownership of that landscaping to the neighbors on that side of the fence. We don't have any way to access it. But what we have committed to do is, we're going to build the wall the very first thing during construction, and then we're going to meet with each individual neighbor, and we've dedicated to put in additional landscaping at their choice.
In other words, you're giving them another 30 feet on our property line, correct?
Without officially beating it, yes, sir.
That's what it looks like. Okay. If they're not happy with that, they've got a problem.
What's, are there any, there was one rendering that looked like a vehicle was actually, had driven in or underneath, are there any drive-in access?
There are not. Every unit is accessible via internal hallway.
And they're 100% climate-controlled?
Yes, sir.
So, are these all RTUs, or where do these condensing units sit?
Likely on the roof or on the wetland side.
And do you, does this ownership or buy this parcel, does it go all the way, does the property line go all the way to the corner, including the wetland? Is that...
We're buying the balance of the property, the Aquatic Center.
How many units are you expecting to be in this?
We haven't finalized that plan yet, but roughly 600, 650. They're small.
Yeah, well, 100, 150 feet. And you'll have an FTE there from what operating hours?
Operating hour, a full-time employee will be there from 8:30 to 5:00.
And then I assume it's accessible by those who are renting at 24/7, 365 at any meeting point? Is there any type of lighting as a result of accessibility that would be a concern?
You know, that's why we agreed to the pedestrian-style lighting in the parking lots, so we gave the lighting as concerns with our neighbors. You know, just like any commercial use, there's going to be lighting within the parking lot, but the interior lights will be on motion sensors, and they'll only be on if somebody has a building.
Any further questions? He's got one more, I can tell him. He's got it in him, he just can't get it out.
My only question, if there's nobody in the audience to oppose, I would make a motion to approve.
Yeah, that was going to be a question also, not of him, though. Is there any one from Hunter Oaks or from Marvin Creek or any of the adjacent?
Yes, do we, would you step forward and identify yourself, please, singly or one at a time, ever have? If y'all would like to come both at one time, that'd be more than fine, no problem.
I'm John Yeagley. I live at 913 Greyscroft Drive, Waxaw, Hunter Oaks, resident, live... Live right, actually, right here. So, I'm going to be adjacent, directly adjacent to it. Myself and my neighbors, Tony's with me tonight, a lot of the other residents aren't available to be here. We did meet with Morning Star and Dave and Matt. Had a great meeting with them, had an opportunity to discuss our concerns about lighting, look of the building, buffering, leaving our existing tree buffer between our backyard and their facility. They have worked with us. We do appreciate their ability to work with us. We've known that this is going to be, you know, a commercial development back there, and I feel confident that as they develop and go forward, we'll be able to, if we do have any, you know, concerns about, hey, Matt, this light, you know, can you make sure that gets dimmed because, you know, it's shining in somebody's back bedroom, I feel confident that they will do something to alleviate it, whether it's to dim it at certain hours or not. But they have been good neighbors. Like I said, they did meet with us, and we did have about eight of us that are immediately adjacent to the property that were there that day, that met, and, you know, they've been good neighbors, and we're happy to work with them and have them back there as a neighbor.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. And sir, I believe you were wanting to speak also.
My name is Tony Stankowski. I live at 911 Greyscroft Drive. I will basically be looking at the back of the building. I'm not opposed to it at all. I'm actually in favor of it. They've addressed all of our concerns and worked with us very well. I would strongly urge you to push this forward.
Thank you very much. Yes, if you would like to come forward, please.
John Williams Sorensen at 9201 Rockwater Court in Canterfield Creek, and just like to make one comment, because traffic and the security is an issue because... Because as you're coming from Marvin Creek east on Tom Short, that's a blind driveway. Canterfield Creek has common property at that corner and it's heavily wooded. You can't see someone coming in or out. So that's something to consider. And as you mentioned, across the road is now an adult community. That's also going to be dumping right there in that same area as that access point for the swim club and for the storage facility. And those, those are already on, you know, Marvin's property and, and it's not a dividing line between, we're all part of Union County and pay our taxes in Union County. But you need to consider that with Marvin, because that is a blind intersection.
That is in the town, that is the town of Marvin, that correct?
Yeah, I've lived there 15 years before Tom Short and Ray Rower even put in. It's pretty heavily wooded. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else want to speak? If not, the chair will entertain a motion at this point in time. Move that we approve as presented?
Yes, sir.
All right, do I hear a second?
Second.
I hear a second, any further discussion from any of the board members here? If not, all those in favor say aye. And all those opposed, like, sign it. We have, let's have a show of hand, all those in favors? We have four in favor, all those opposed. And we have three opposed. All right, motion passes, four to three. All right, now we will go to motion, yeah, and thank y'all for your presentation, thank y'all for y'all's, y'all's contribution. We will now go to item number seven, that takes the minutes in Union County Development Ordinance. So I'll let the staff talk with us at this point in time. Does anyone need to take a break for a small, short time? Everybody good? All right, we're on to number seven. And who would we be doing?
We have some proposed text changes that this staff initiated for you to think about. And we've discussed some of these in the past. And we did cut out a couple of them because of some requests and we'll be back with you with those in January. But to begin with, one of the items that we had some questions about in our ordinance had to do with how we identify setbacks for townhomes. The way it was, the way it was envisioned is that townhomes don't really have setbacks except for when they get to a corner. When you have a corner lot, then obviously there's a setback. But generally how, townhomes are, they're sandwiched up against each other. And they may have a front, they may have a rear, but don't really have many side setbacks until they get to the corner unit where the corner unit has a side setback. But unfortunately, that was not necessarily clear, or it was a little bit misleading as to what that setback should be. And so we, we've requested that the setbacks be a little clearer. The lot width does not apply to townhomes, number one. Again, townhomes are not necessarily a lot. There's a lot that's associated with it, but it's not what you and I would think of as far as someone owning a lot. That's not what a townhouse is. So again, we want to identify that the lot width portion is not really, doesn't apply to a townhome. And also, when it comes to the side setback, that would only apply on corners. It doesn't apply when you just have unit to unit to unit. It really applies to the corner side of it. So that's, those were the, the changes that we wanted the board to consider for townhomes when we're dealing with setbacks. Anyone have any questions about that particular item? Okay, all right. On some of the other items, section 35, we talked about keeping of horses. We recognize that we really didn't have a provision for where the keeping of horses could be a principal use. And we had that ability, Lee, if I'm not mistaken, in our previous ordinance. And we recognized that was a mistake, we really weren't trying to cut that out. So we want to go back in and add that the keeping of horses, equestrian activities can be allowed as a principal use on a piece of property, provided, of course, that the property has at least four acres or greater. So we wanted to add that language back into that section to clarify it can be used as a principal use. Because otherwise, someone would have to build a house and that would have to be the principal use and they wouldn't be able to have a horse barn and horses on a five-acre piece. And that was not the intention. The intention is allow that as a principal use if someone wished to do that on this property.
Sir, any, the underscored in the yellow here, I am assuming is the additional.
That is correct, yes, sir. I'm sorry, I didn't say that earlier, Everett is correct. Anything that is highlighted and underlined is the new addition that we're talking about.
And I understand on the keeping of horses, what that means is somebody that, like Brian said, doesn't have a house on the property and they have horses for personal recreational use.
This isn't someone who is running a stable facility.
Well, where they want to make a pasture and keep horses now. You can have a horse breeding operation as operating as an agricultural activity. All that stuff's still exempt from, from, from zoning. So if you have a horse breeding facility where you're operating as an agricultural use, that's, that's still considered an agricultural use and it's still exempt. We're in no way regulating that activity. This is for somebody that's not acting as an agricultural use. It's just, they have horses for personal recreational use and they don't want to keep them on their property, they want to pasture them somewhere else. That was allowed in the old ordinance and we felt it was still appropriate, so we just talked about it and get back to you.
Is there a limit to the number that they can keep or does it just?
Our limit is based on a horse per acre. So again, if you had four acres, you could have four horses. It really depends on the number of acres you have, the amount of acres.
And that this is keeping possessions, not boarding.
That is correct. If someone wanted to rent stable space, that's a whole different ballgame. All right, the next section talks about livestock and poultry. And again, what we've got here is, it refers back to 35.01 D2. And again, that has to do with the exception. We want to make sure that we do allow certain things and there's an exception there. So it's referring back to the, the exception for the keeping of horses. Below that, what we're really doing on the chicken coop side is we're, we're making a standard. We don't have a standard right now. So if someone wanted to keep chickens on their property, they can. And we're not saying you can't, but if you're going to build a, you're going to build something for them to live in. Then, number one, it has to be a certain square footage size, it can't exceed that. And if it is, then it, then it has to meet some other rules and regulations. So a chicken coop that is larger than 144 square feet, those activities would be prohibited as a residential use. You would have to have something essentially 12 by 12 or 12 by foot, something less, to be able to house those chickens on residential property. And that's not farm, like Lee said before. If you have a valid farming operation where you qualify as a bona fide farm, this does not apply to that. The county has no, no right to actually regulate that. But you're living in a neighborhood and you want to keep some chickens, that's fine. But you can't have a coop bigger than 144 square feet. Now, if you want to free-range them, you can free-range them all you want to. But that's what, we wanted some standards and we didn't have any.
That's your HOA.
And again, the HOA, Robert makes a very good point. This does not infringe on the HOA's ability to regulate their own rules. If they have rules that say you can't have them, that's fine.
They just can't be any less stringent, correct?
They, they can be, they can be more stringent and you're right. They can't be less stringent because the, the county is going to, we're going to go up to our line, basically. So that has to do with the livestock and poultry. The last, yes, sir.
Is that supposed to say of instead of O S?
Yes, it should say of, that's correct. And we may find some other typographical errors as we go through this. And if we do, that does not require necessarily board approval, we'll make those changes as we find them. And if you do find them, let us know. The last item, I'm sorry, yes, sir.
With the chickens, like the horses are one per acre, what's the chickens?
No, now that, there is no limitation on the number on the acreage.
Free-range is more.
That one's not, we don't, we don't have a standard for that one. So, yeah, you could have quite a few. We hope the neighbors kind of somewhat regulate that, but.
How many chickens can you fit in a 12 by 12 space?
That's a good question. My brother-in-law has chickens.
And is there a height restriction to that 12 by 12 space?
No, there is not a height restriction.
Well, we've got a 35-foot height max in the residential side.
Well, I take that back, actually, I take that back. There actually is a height restriction. And the reason why I say that is, how we came up with 144 square feet is this. Any structure that is less than 12 feet or 12 feet in any side, that's height or side, does not require a building permit. If it's greater than 12 feet on any side or height, then it requires a building permit. So the reason why we selected 144 square feet is 12 by 12, it's obviously not exceeding 12 feet, and it couldn't exceed 12 feet in height. Because if it does, now it requires a building permit. And it's going to be greater than 144 square feet, we're going to look at the whole side. Well, that's cubic feet, but anyway. It would still require a building permit. So that's why we selected 144 square feet, we wanted to keep it in that building permit range. All right, the next item, any other questions related to that one? The next item has to do with the accessory structures. We talked about this previously when, when we met with the board, about how we recognize that our current regulations restrict accessory structures to being the size of the principal residential structure, no matter how big the property is. So you have 100 acres and you have a 1,000-square-foot house? Then a 1,000-square-foot accessory building is all you could have under our current ordinance. And that was not really what was intended, but that's what we have, those are our rules. And so we thought about it and looked at it and said, you know what? There is a good reason and good cause for having limitations on the size of accessory structures on smaller pieces of property. Because you don't want the scale of the accessory to overwhelm the area. So anything that is less than two acres, then, then we're going to say it's going to be exactly what the rule is. And that is accessory structure cannot exceed the square footage of the principal structure. And that's the total of all accessory structures. So if you've got a 5,000-square-foot house, you can have 5,000 square feet of accessory structures. If you have a 1,000-square-foot home, then you can only have 1,000 square feet of accessory structures. That's just the nature of your particular piece of property on a smaller lot. Now, when you start going up in size, we've recommended that if it's two, if it's two acres but less than four acres, you'd be allowed to go 125% of the size of the principal dwelling. If it's four acres and less than seven acres, be allowed to go up to 150% of the size of the principal dwelling. And if it's seven acres but less than 10 acres, you'd be allowed to go up to 175%. And then finally, if you have 10 acres or greater, there really is no limit on the amount of accessory structure space that you could have. Again, the thought is, you really can't see the scale of it because that's a fairly large piece of property. We're looking for some input from the board on any of these suggested changes. What do you like about them, what do you not like about them, are you willing to support them? And if so, where do we go from here as far as taking them to the commissioner's consideration?
And again, I want to point out that accessory structure is not going to apply to bona fide farms. So if you have a house on a piece of property and you're operating a dairy farm, I don't think, I don't have any one of those in the county, but if you want to have a barn, that, that's not going to be subject to this accessory structure rule.
Correct.
That, that barn is exempt from any kind of county zoning there is. So they can build as big as they need to. This would apply to, like, if you've got 10 acres, you're more likely going to have baby, you're going to have a four-wheeler that do work on your property that may not be agricultural in nature. You might need a bigger building to store than typical, you know, garage or thousands of square feet, you're going to have more toys.
You might want a bigger man cave, I don't know. Could be.
So, so if you took a accessory garage, a pool house and any other outbuilding, that total cannot exceed these limits?
That's correct, yes, sir. Because it's the total of all accessory structures on the property.
Okay, regardless of how you define a structure. I mean, if I, if I were to build an open building with just a roof, four posts and just a roof, that is considered a structure?
Yeah, that's correct.
So this, this kind of is along the line, I'm more concerned about the chicken coop loop. Because what constitutes a chicken coop, just because you put chickens in it?
Yeah, we don't have any design requirements, but if it is a, if it is intended to house the chickens, then we'll call it a coop, absolutely. If it's intended for them to be housed in that, then it will be called a coop. And that counts towards the accessory, I want you guys to understand that. So if I've got 144-square-foot chicken coop, that counts towards my total of accessory structures on my property.
Ryan, let me ask a question.
So they can put like 50 of them.
What's it asking? Is the actual building 12 by 12, you've got an outlet where the chickens can run, 12-yard?
Is there a turnway in the coop?
The building itself.
Right in, right out.
So what we're not talking about is the area. We're talking about the building itself. So we're not talking about the fenced area, we're not talking about where they can run and play and whatever, we're talking about the building.
Yeah, because in theory, I could have the 12 by 12, which I think if a shed, you know, it's the prefab stuff you buy on the side of the road, dump in the backyard, most people put their riding lawnmowers and whatnot in it. But I'm going to put chickens, so now I've screened in my whole backyard, that's, that's feasible.
That, you can do that, you can count that as your chicken coop.
If this is not amended the way you're recommending, how, what is possible? Any size?
Well, currently, right now, it's, it's, as far as the chicken coop goes, there is no size limitation. The limitation is the amount of total accessory structure size you can have on the property. So that's limited by how big your home is.
So right now, it doesn't matter acreage, it's, you have 1,000 square foot on 10 acres, which, I mean.
You could have a 1,000-square-foot chicken coop if you wanted to. Now, I mean, that's getting close to, I mean, that's not recreational, but I mean, in theory, yes. If you wanted to have that size, there's nothing in the ordinance that prevents that.
Yes, it's slippery slope. We have neighbors that have had chickens.
It, the, the subject is a touchy subject.
It's a touchy subject.
It is, and, and what you have is you have an urban and you have a rural. And, and the rural side of it is very used to that and the urban side is, is less, but becoming more because more people are actually, you know, they're, they're having chickens. Now, I think where you run into the biggest problem, and we don't address this, are roosters. Chickens generally by themselves are, they don't make a lot of noise, but a rooster can be, can be a bit of a nuisance. And I think that's where you run into some of your biggest issues. We don't address that in here. We don't say you can have only hens, you can, we stay away from that. We're not going to get in the animal control business.
This, this is reasonable, it's given some leeway, but still given some limits also.
What, what we're trying to do is, is at least establish some standard on residential property. Because we're seeing more of the smaller lots where people want to keep chickens, and that's fine. But understand, it does create a potential impact on adjacent properties. But understand, it does create a potential impact on adjacent properties. So we're trying to put a standard in place.
I just wish, I guess there's maybe not, and maybe this gets into the animal control area, that we could restrict the total size of what that 12 by 12 structure supports. And I know that means getting into, because you could argue, well, that's free range, and you can only fit how many fit in there, and those who can't fit in there have to sleep outside.
This, that depends on so many variables inside the house, and it would be very difficult to delineate the actual number you could put in. If it was nesting birds, or whether it was just birds that you were growing for meat production, or whether you had roosting boards in there, or different levels. You know, when I grew chickens commercially for brolers, you were only allowed so many per square foot of the chicken house. And that was through PETA and through the agreement they had made with the integrator companies. An individual, there is no way you can make a numerical quantity.
Be difficult.
It would be extremely difficult. It would be unenforceable.
What we're relying on, honestly, is the homeowners associations to regulate anything beyond what we're putting in place. Ours is the minimum standard. If they want anything greater than that, the homeowners association would really take that on themselves.
And most HOAs don't even allow chickens.
I would venture to guess a lot of them have absolutely no allowance on farm animals.
Why do we say only one horse per acre, and we can't say how many chickens per acre?
It's not that we can't. We just never have regulated the amount, to be honest with you. I mean, the board could certainly say, hey, we suggest that you can have no more than this many chickens. And that certainly can be a suggestion. We've just never regulated that.
Like Milton said, how many? You were saying that PETA and Borla said so many per square foot.
Yes, but you've got to understand that is, that is when you're in meat production, and you're on a flat floor, laying houses go up in layers. You have nests. You know, you could quadruple the number of chickens that you would have in the actual house. So, you know, you're going to, you just can't make one size fits all, is what you can't do.
Everett's correct.
You're just looking basically for, to set a parameter...
Of size of the building.
Size of the building. At this point, I mean, now Patrick's point is, you know, can you suggest limitations on the number of chickens? You certainly can.
The HOAs to take it to the next level if you're on that branch?
But there's a lot of places that don't have HOAs.
We're not suggesting either, but can you? Yes, you can.
I mean, there's so many associations that don't have HOAs though.
That is true. You're absolutely correct. Absolutely.
Why is there limits on how many horses per acre?
The general rule of thumb agriculturally is that one acre of grassland can only support one horse or one cow per acre. That has always been the rule of thumb since the early 1900s. And in more than that, you have exercise facilities and extremely amount of great amount of feed for them. That's just a rule. That's an actual rule of thumb.
Yes, sir.
The reason I asked that question about the fence, I want to clarify that.
Sure.
When I go home and tell my son-in-law that what we voted on tonight, he would say, you didn't destroy my chicken run, did you? But anyway, the whole point is... One thing I learned from him was that the number of boxes, like what Everett was talking about, depicts a number of chickens. I think it's three chickens per box. So if you've got four boxes, the maximum you should have is 12 chickens. Am I right, Everett?
We're right, but we're out of our area of expertise.
Oh, come on now. We will entertain whoever the board wants to entertain.
Do we need to vote on these individually, or can we vote on all these recommendations at one time?
My personal opinion is if the board is comfortable with voting on them as a whole, I think you can. Obviously, if you then, you know, get into a situation where you don't support an individual one, we need to pull it out and talk about it. But I think that you can vote on them as a whole, and that's up to you. But I think you can.
Mr. Chairman? Yes. The set of amendments, the text amendments, by staff-initiated text amendments, look good to me. They look like they're appropriate and what's needed, with the exception of some typos, as Robert pointed out. So if you'll entertain a motion, make a motion to him.
I have a motion in the floor.
Plus, when we move to January, we need to... We moved to January now, don't forget that.
All right. Now, with the exception of item number L.
Right.
That's right.
Yes, that's correct. We're not voting on item number F. That was removed, obviously. So we're only talking about the ones that I just went through.
And that is satisfactory.
Yes.
We have a second?
We have a question, sir.
Well, I have a discussion. So you mentioned roosters. That goes into, in my mind, breeding. You know, now, you know, so is that another issue? Are you now using it, are you now breeding animals?
There's currently no restriction, again, on roosters or hens. So if someone has a rooster, then they certainly can. And, you know, if they're using that rooster for breeding purposes, then they can. Again, it's whether or not this is for personal use, or whether they want to classify it as agricultural. I will give you an anecdote. We had a one-acre piece of property. A gentleman had, I want to say, maybe 50 chickens and several roosters. His neighbors weren't very happy. We tried to talk to him about his coop facilities. We didn't have this standard in place. We were really trying to work with the neighbors on getting something addressed. 50 chickens, that's not a lot, but, I mean, for residential, it can seem like a lot. He was able to secure a USDA number for a one-acre piece of property for 50 chickens, which now makes him a bona fide farm, and we can't regulate him at all. I want you to understand how easy it is to get a USDA number. So what we're trying not to do here is overstep our bounds and push people into taking a step that we don't want them to take, because they could literally go and get a USDA number, because they'd give it out like candy. And we would actually have no restrictions whatsoever. We're looking at a balance. What can we do that's reasonable without pushing folks into this? Well, I'm just going to be a bona fide farm. Because that's exactly what he did. He said, I don't care what my neighbors like or don't like. I'm just going to choose this option over here, because I think I can do it. And he was able to accomplish that. So just be aware of that.
Must be too stringent.
Sometimes you can push them too far, and you lose some control. And that was our hope, is we kind of strike a balance.
Well, I mean, I think that fact still remains regardless of how we vote, correct?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Now, when he became a farm, does he have to produce those chickens for anybody specific?
To be perfectly honest, the only thing we do is require that he can show that he still has that USDA number. And as long as he can produce that he has the number, and the number is still valid, we consider him a bona fide farm, and we don't regulate it. Now, if at some point in time that goes away, he loses that status, well, that's a different ballgame. We have to deal with it as a potential violation. But, you know, whatever he has to do to continue to meet his USDA requirements, we don't really get involved in that.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of our agenda item number seven, with the exception of section F, say aye. And all those opposed, like, say no. Motion passes.
Very good. Can I ask a question? Before we get on? And I noticed on the previous project with PUD, we did have some individuals who did not support it. Was it the traffic issue that caused you not to support that? I just wanted to make sure I understood what your concern was.
There was two things. First of all, and I'll be totally upfront with you. He showed a picture of an antiquated storage unit. I think we're all smarter than to know that that's not what they built. That's number one, one issue. The other one is, and I just mentioned it to Robert, there's no place for a truck, whether it's 20-foot or 40-foot, to back up. They've got to pull alongside. And I know, I had looked at it from a personal standpoint. I could not rent there, because I had eight units when I moved here three years ago. And there was no place for the moving van to move up in there. And he said it was residential. I bought that, but I'm more concerned about the safety of those swimmers than anything else. Plus, there's other traffic issues with the corner of the blind side, et cetera, that was brought up by the other gentleman.
I just wanted to understand what the concerns were.
That's my personal opinion.
Mine was, I mean, it's residential. And how many people know how to drive trucks and trailers? So going through, they're going to go the easy way in, the easy way out. So they're going to come down railroad, they're going to make that right in. It's a straight run. They're going to go right into the facility. When they come out, they're going to go right again. They're going to go down past the swim club, and they're going to make a right out, go back out to railroad.
I want to be able to express this to the commissioners when we go to the commissioners, what concerns were. That's why I wanted to understand what your concerns were. All right. Very good, thank you very much. I think you've done it.
I would like to say that property has been vacant for so many years, and this is the best use I have seen presented for it. It's the least traffic. And it's the best use I've seen presented. I'm just going to blank with it.
And I don't think the use is really the issue. I think the traffic pattern is really what constitutes the issue. I mean, it's a big facility with 100,000 square feet plus. So to say that he's only going to have 16 people a week there...
A day.
A day, I'm sorry. It just seems out of balance. Whenever I've ever gone to a storage facility, what you usually see are box trucks, anywhere between 12 to 26 feet. And, I mean, you might see a car, a truck, a pickup truck alongside them. But generally, and even if you're moving household items, you know, you rent a U-Haul, and you're trying to navigate through there, it just doesn't seem to me to fit the way the traffic patterns are laid out. And again, I don't, you know, that's why I was trying to come up with different suggestions. I don't know what you could do to alleviate the ingress and egress of that area, but having it go back and forth across that swim area, especially on a Saturday morning when most people are going to be moving, that's going to be one of their busy times. It just seems like there's going to be a conflict there. And unfortunately, I hate to say it, but, I mean, my fear is that someone's going to get hurt or killed.
I travel railroad every day, and it is jam-packed at rush hour, coming down railroad.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Mr. Black?
Just real quickly, I want to keep you abreast of three projects that we're in initial stages of. One of them, we got a Mumpo grant to do a study for critical intersections. We've selected a consultant, RS&amp;H out of Charlotte. We're in the process of negotiating that contract. Hopefully, we'll have it done first of this month, so we can start gathering some data. But in 2016, you know, we'll be having stakeholder meetings and that type of thing, getting with citizens, trying to identify, you know, where are those critical intersections? I think we'll have at least 15 that we'll be able to, up to 15, that we'll be able to identify. And the main purpose is to not do full-blown engineering for them, but a concept, so that we've got it in a situation hopefully we can get funding for. So we'd have a project sheets on all 15 that, like I say, that would be, could qualify to get some funds to help, you know, correct those critical intersections. That's one project going on. And I'd say, hopefully, we'll get that contract this month and start gathering data, so that after the holidays, we can start having some stakeholder groups and stuff, and start identifying where these intersections might be. The second project is we're working on a smaller plan. We're trying to work with one of our towns to do a joint planning project. And hopefully this week, we will get something from the town, so that we can start... We've already gathered some data, but get down in. And again, that'll start after the first of the year, doing a joint planning, a smaller area planning project. And the third project is, we're in the process of working with our consultant that developed our development ordinance to come up with a development guide. You know, in there, we'll have, you know, contacts. We'll have frequently asked questions. We'll have all the processes laid out. Hopefully, make it a more user-friendly type of document, so that it would be a good guide to go along with our ordinance, to help folks facilitate through the process, whether they're, you know, doing a subdivision or rezoning. We've got a working draft back from the consultants this week. We're going to start reviewing that, come up with some additional information, and hopefully have that ready sometime, you know, by early spring. So those are the three projects that staff's working on that'll get into high gear after the, at least two of them after the first of the year. And the other one, we hope, we'll have it wrapped up and back for y'all to look at sometime in the early spring.
Thank you, Mr. Black. Do we have any brief comments? Seeing none and hearing none, do I hear a motion that we adjourn?
Should we adjourn?
We've got a million motions. Do we have a second? And we have all seconds? So all those in favor, say aye. Motion passes unanimously. The only unanimous vote we've had.